This hospital can't afford an 8% difference. We've got to be able to rally the troops, talk to the legislature, work with the healthcare authority to say, "This isn't going to work. You're going to put us on business if you keep doing this to us." The part of the state of Washington becoming, getting this CMS waiver I talked about at the beginning, what they're doing is they're saying to CMS, "CMS, thank you very much. We would like to manage our own monies and our own programs in our state, and this is how we're going to do that." What they've done in CMS condition is said, "You know what? Yep, you've got all the things in line, and yep, go ahead and do that." It has a huge impact on us. Some of it is a positive, some of it doesn't really affect us. So what the state had to do when they talked to CMS about this waiver is they had to break the state up into different areas, and they have this thing called accountable communities of health. And what has happened, and this is kind of interesting, is we're in this greater Columbia piece here, and what's interesting about it, and here we are, it's my hand. When they put this together, it was based on behavioral health patterns, not primary care and patient patterns. So what happens for us is there's going to be money coming, okay, and there's, I can talk about the dollars that are coming. There's going to be money coming, however, it's all in relation to here, not the fact that our referral pattern is north and into this other region called Better Health Together into Spokane. You know, we don't say, if somebody has a serious heart issue, we don't send them to Yakima County, we don't send them to Tri-Cities or to Walla Walla. No, we send them up to Spokane, and if it's really bad, they go over to Seattle, okay? So for us, what's happening, and this is happening very, very rapidly because the state is on a quick timeline, timeline, all of these groups have initiatives that they have to address. And some of those initiatives that came forward, there was eight of them for our little area here, actually it's a big area. But there's money coming, but we need to have those initiatives addressed. And so some of those are care coordination. How are we doing that for the patients? How is the referral system going? How are we coordinating their care back to home, back to the community and that? There's transitional care dollars. There's also, and this is just in 2018, that there is supposed to be, and one of my employees can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's about $6 million that is supposed to be coming to this region for bidirectional integration, meaning that how's the information flowing back and forth? How's the care coordination going? There's money for opioid use. You know, we do have a lot of mental health issues here. We do have alcohol and drug issues here, and so there will be money coming that way. There's also $1.5 million coming to this region for chronic disease management. What are we doing about that? We should be doing something about that, and how are we addressing that? And that's where we got the CHABAB group and we've got the PACE group, but there's more to it than that. There's a lot of work that has to be done, reaching into our schools, reaching into other relationships with other organizations. We have a great relationship with Dayton. We have a great relationship with Tri-State. When we lost our CNO, Tri-State, I called them up and asked them if they could please help us, and they let us borrow two days a week their CNO to help us work through while we hired a director of nursing. So it's that collaboration piece. We're working with Whitman on possibly how we can share radiology staff. We can't stand alone, and Chris can probably speak to that at a conference this past summer. They talked about you've got to have collaboration, you've got to be working together. The economy is a scale, there's not more dollars coming, so you've got to find ways to better manage that. And we worked really hard to do that. When I got here, our cost for nursing agency was extremely high. It was more than what we were paying some of our providers. We were able to get those agency costs down. Do we need agency? Yeah, we do, because people need and have the right to go on vacation. We need to draw more nurses here. We're looking to work with Dayton on a CNA course. You know, they've got, we had the certification here, but we lost it. For some reason, we lost it. I don't know why we lost it, but we lost it. So, but we're still in the queue. So we're working with Dayton because they have the educator. How can we work together to get, to build our own? Reach out into the, reach out into the high schools. At one facility I was at, it was great. We had a CNA program in high school, and we actually had a room where the students could learn about medical fields and learn about doing different things in hospitals and that. And we actually had, oh, I pressed the button again. I'm sorry. Okay, I'll put it, I'll put it down. Anyways, so at one facility, we actually had an outreach program into the, to the high schools. And what happened is they could go on work studying, they could work in the hospital, earn some money, get integrated into learning about healthcare and what it is. It's just not that building up on where grandma goes and dies kind of thing. You know, we want to be able to bring them in. And so we hope to be able to do something similar here because it creates building our own. And also to have that staff that if there's a situation where we need to call them in, they'll, they can come in. And we don't have to hire agency. Agency, agency staff is expensive, but we have to have the coverage. All right, developing the model for care. The board and myself, as well as I've been sharing with the staff, we're looking at what they call a federal FQHC for short. You've probably heard that. It's a federal qualified health center. It's a different model of care. It's generally what we do now, but we would have to change the structure at the board level to not have under an FQHC the long-term care in the hospital because in an, under an FQHC model, you cannot have those services. And that's okay. You can have two separate boards for that, and still, it's still legal in that. And why do we want to move to an FQHC? Well, based upon a feasibility study that we had done, it looks like there's opportunity for better reimbursement for us, as well as it opens up a lot more grants for us. And that's what's important, is to be able to get grants so we can take care of the community and also, there's also big block grants so that if you wanted to build a new clinic or whatever, there's a lot more opportunity there. So we're looking at that. Again, when we look at the model of care, we need to see what our, what our population needs. I am working with Dayton on possibly contracting for speech therapy. We have a lot of elders in our facility. I should know what the median age is on that, but I don't. But I know there's a lot that are in their 90s, and there's problems with swallowing. So we want to make sure that we're taking care of them and making sure that they can speak as they get older and that. The way of the future is telemedicine and telehealth. You know, we're looking at, and we're working with the state to make sure that we, you know, follow all the rules on a possible virtual provider. We have the ability to give reimbursement on that. We're vetting that information now. So basically, we would convert one of the offices down in the clinic to a multi-purpose room where we can use it for behavioral health, telehealth, and possibly a virtual provider. I think that there is more and more movement towards that way. I know that there are several organizations in Washington State that do that, and I think that is a model of care that's going to help to provide services here. When I first got here, I was looking at some of the referral patterns and thinking, oh, if I could get ahold of the neurosurgeon that these people go see, that if I gave them an iPad, then that person wouldn't have to travel all the way over there to see that person, that provider, and they could just stay right here, and we could get them taken care of. We need to look at that because with the population that we have that's over age 55, going over somewhat of a little bit of a pass can be treacherous in the wintertime, and we don't want, we don't want that. We want to be able to provide the best possible care we can here. So what's on my docket? Continuing to nurture the relationships that we have with those other facilities. You know, we're, when I got here, we have this electronic medical record system that basically got sold, and when it got sold, it broke apart, and so now we have to get a new electronic health record system. Those are pretty spendy. We were vetting various proposals, and we looked to Tri-State and said, "You know, we refer to you guys all the time. Let's see what it would take to go ahead and, you know, get your system in." It was too expensive. It was, it's not affordable for our size facility. It's just too expensive. So we're looking at some other, other electronic health records that are out there that are for small critical access hospitals that is more affordable and sustainable and is something that we can use to have that integration between the clinic and the hospital. We're going to continue to work on the strategies that are outlined in the, in the sheet of paper there. We're going to continue to work with RAP and the state to try to develop that model of care. You know, if that's behavioral health integration, what does that look like? I bet most of you don't know that we had a behavioral health person that was coming up to the hospital to see community members. Well, the model of care that most critical access hospitals that have a clinic actually integrate that into their clinic. Should we do that? How would we do that? Couldn't we do that? We're vetting that, but there's money coming to help us do that from the accountable communities of health, as well as from the RAP group. Continue building a great organization. You know, the staff really work hard, and I really appreciate them every day. They are the reason that I get up in the morning because the energy that they have and how that we can get this organization turned around is very, very good. And trying to enlist the community's support, whether that's through a levy, whether that's through getting involved in some special task force, task force, whether that's volunteering up at the hospital for some special projects. And then along the way, we have to address regulatory and compliance issues. That's just required. And then, of course, talking about the electronic health record. So the 2018 levy request, just to give you a little bit of history, last year, our levy, you can see down at the bottom here, was about 800, I've got a slide on that. The next slide actually talks about that, but just wanted to kind of get you queued up on, you know, where the levy dollars are going. You know, we've got the road district getting about 811,000, the city of Pomeroy. Because it's just a taxing district within the, within the city of Pomeroy, it's only 174,000, even though the value is at 2.48, and that's supposed to say, not percent, that's supposed to say per 1,000. So let's just, oh man, the numbers got all messed up on this slide. Okay, so we're going to try to talk through this pretty quickly, but, so I just wanted to give you a history of the levy. So in 2012, we had about $81,000 in regular levy, then in 2013, we asked for a special levy. Now, special levies are really designed for capital improvements and big things. You know, purchasing a big piece of equipment, or, you know, building a new clinic, or the boiler goes out in the hospital. You really don't use special levies for operations, but that's a path that we were going down. And so we followed that for a few years in these requests. And so in 2017, and these numbers have been updated and vetted by Brian at, in the auditor's department, and for 2017, we'll get about $821,000 in levy dollars. So what does all that mean? Well, on average, if you just said, okay, we got all this money that's come through, on average, it's about $616,000 a year. So if you kind of smoothed it out between what we get from the regular levy and the special levy, it's about $616,000. Now, for '18, with what we know, money coming from the ACH and money coming, not, money coming from RAP and reimbursement is getting better in the clinic. We're getting 200, I think it's $210 per visit now, but we are just going to not ask for a special levy. Because what happens with a special levy is every year, you have to spend hours and hours and hours talking about this kind of stuff and turning around and having to request that. I'll tell you, it's very difficult for me to recruit when I have to say that we have to ask for a special levy. "Oh, so basically you're living paycheck to paycheck?" Well, yeah, kind of. I don't exactly say it like that, but the fact of the matter is that, you know, it'd be a different story if we didn't have the, the special levy this past year. So with that, what we've outlined here is that we're just going to, what they call do a levy lift to 75 cents per $1,000 of property value. Now, if you look at what we've done in the past, just from the simple math side of it, we've got the regular levy, in 2017, it was .318, and then the special levy was a 1 or 2. So we're basically cutting that levy in half, but because there's more projected windmill dollars and the property values are going up, that we anticipate that we would, we're asking for support of about $461,000. Why do we want to make the change? Well, this .75, it would just be perpetual. So every year, it would just keep going, and we would get that every year, and we could count on that and put that in our budget, and we could go ahead and just get some sustainability going, and I think it would really help with recruiting as well. So what happens if we don't pass the levy? This is the elephants in the room. Well, we'll still be here because we have elder care and there are, there are needs in this community, but services will have to be curtailed. What that looks like? It's, it's, it's a work in process. I'm not sure what that would look like at this point. And then the access to care might change as well. What does that look like? Do we have to exponentially look to the FQHC side of it? We got some money in the bank to hold this over, but you don't want to drain all your dollars away. And there could be exacerbation of health disparities, you know, providing services. We're not doing, if we're not for some reason doing the accountable communities of health initiatives that they want us to do. So I'm going to wrap that up, and I'm going to give the mic over to Chris.
Okay, for the last few months, we've had open board seats on the board, and people have wondered why we had not filled those. It was my understanding that we couldn't do that because of law, but that is not true, and we could have filled them. But we have been advised, we had a webinar meeting last June 7th, and that question was brought up, and they advised that, no, you cannot play favoritism to a person that has applied to run for that seat and put them in there, or you should not, not say you can't, you should not. We were advised. We were also went to a lawyer, Robert Setler, earlier this month, and he had also said that we have set the precedence that we should stick with that. So this is why we have not filled those seats. We don't feel, we don't want to show favoritism to people that are running for that board. Now, if everybody's read their pamphlet that was put out on Facebook, they can be filled next month very easily. Once the election is certified, the people that are elected can go right into their seats, and we can put them there as an egg court meeting. So we've only got basically two more meetings without board members to worry about. So that's what we will probably do. We will discuss this in our regular meeting on Wednesday and make a decision. That's exactly how we're going to, are going to go adopt this. Nothing has been set. Board has not made the decision, but it will be discussed then. What else do I want to do? Yeah, with the Robert, the clarification that we received from Robert Setler did come right after the last special meeting that we had, which was due last week. So, I was thinking of something else I wanted to say, but I can't. Think of it now, if I do, I'll let you guys know. Or...
Who's making this?
There are two people running. Yep. And also, that's, that was, I was going to say now, anybody who wants to run is a right edge, you can do that. That's what I did two years ago, about the seat. You guys want to run for the board, there's two people running, you can run against them.
Who's running?
Who's running? Stephen Cannon and Jennifer Dixon. And they're running for Jay Hoffman's, or Ray Hoffman's and father, father's seats. And the young ones could step down and we could fill both seats next month, so, or no hesitation. After they are certified.
I want to encourage everyone to vote in November. Your vote determines the existence of the hospital. The commissioners are, yeah, we didn't, are dedicated to providing healthcare for everyone in the county. We support the CEO and the advisors that she uses. It's a huge, it's a huge task to keep providers and staff in a small rural community. The greatest part of the users, as they've said before, are Medicaid and Medicare, and they've paid for us. Rural hospitals are dependent on rotating providers from outside for care. That's the standard right now. And I was telling somebody the other day, there's no Dr. Wylons anymore. The young providers want to be near bigger cities. The spouse usually wants to reside there as well, and so it's, it's very difficult for Brenda to recruit anyone for a full-time position in a rural area. They're not training them that way anymore, and so hopefully she can find someone, but it's not the standard care at all anymore. I want to encourage five or six of you who are able to commit to join a hospital and community committee to discuss options for the future hospital plans. There's a clipboard in the back if you're interested. What you have to remember is that each one of the commissioners has dedicated six years of their life to, to being a commissioner. It's not a day-to-day, it's not a, whenever I have time. It's something that there, it's a big commitment, and so you need to know that going in, that you have, there's plenty to do, and if you're really interested, then you ought to hop in and get involved. So your vote determines the future of our hospital.
Well, I don't have too much to say, but I would like to point out two things. The one, this is the administrator, some people have said, "Well, she's only here three days a week." The truth is, I've received email, time-dated, 5:00 AM, on a day when she wasn't here. I think she worked seven days a week for the hospital, and I think she does an excellent job. If anyone didn't appreciate the presentation she made tonight, you know, there'd be something wrong. The fact is, she's extremely qualified, she has very high credentials, and we're fortunate to have her. Now, the second thing I want to mention is that the board actually works together very well. I don't agree with the other board members about certain, where the future would be for our hospital. I guarantee you, we all discuss this as adults, and we don't scream and yell at each other. So I think we will come to some good, you know, results. Might not be exactly what I think should happen, but they'll have, I think they'll have a good result, and we're going to, we can talk about it. So I'm encouraged about our future, and I hope we'll, we need to provide good care for Garfield County, but the model needs to change. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for listening to our presentation, and now we've come to the portion of questions. And I would ask that you please come to the front of the room if you do have a question, so that all community members can see and hear when you are asking a question. Please state your name, anyone asking questions. This gives us a chance for everyone to meet you. Also, if we have like a parking lot situation where we don't have the answer tonight, but we're going to research it for you, and we'll be able to get back to you individually or post it online. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Good evening, everyone. Wow, that's hot. Good evening, everyone. How many of you were at the meeting the other day? How many of us wanted to vote down the levy and close the hospital? None of us. And I'm going to give these guys, good for you guys for getting up here and doing this. Gary Hauser, you said exactly what I said, we've got to work together. And I, and he said it again tonight. We're in this situation because of why?
After.
Us. We knew... We knew this much two weeks ago. Nobody even knew who our board was. So, I'm not going to sit here and slam anybody, but we do have issues. And I want you all to get up if you have questions. That was the whole point of my meeting, was to get us involved, so we know. I would like everybody to help out by asking questions. And I'm going to say tonight, if you start booing and hollering and bellowing, I'm going to remove you, because that does us no good ever. But there are some serious questions? I have some, not really questions, I have some statements on the recruitment part of it. We had doctors that wanted to be here. I don't know the particulars on all of them, but I know that's a big concern right here. We lost all our providers, so a lot of people don't want to vote on the levy. So, how about it, folks, and ask questions? The only way we're going to get anything done is to act like human beings, talk to them. Good God, they're in our community, we've got to be friends, we can't be mad. Let's get up and ask some questions and see if we can work together. And that's what the whole first meeting was about, was to get people involved. So, come on up.
Hello, my name is Con Crawford. I found it interesting you're talking about what it means to be, have a contract that you're employed at will, which actually means that your contract has no meaning whatsoever, that you can afford prior, you know, unless notice without having any reason to need to be fired. And people make up whatever they want to say about wanting to fire people. And that sometimes not having providers here isn't because the providers didn't want to stay and provide care, it's because they're fired. And I think you need to tell providers that you're trying to recruit, that they are hired at will, and they can be disposed of at any moment, with little or no reason.
Do you just like to follow up on that?
The, you might, I know, I appreciate you doing, but what was your opinion? Yeah, well, you, I would like you to, that's the biggest thing.
So, I can?
Well, you know, I can follow up, I can go ahead and follow up, you're okay?
Hello, okay. In Washington State, where it's law, we are at will. And every contract that I have seen is at will. So, in following what the state law says, it's put in the contracts. Does that answer the question?
No.
No, in my opinion, a contract is to hire me for a certain amount of time with my guidance from, and your guidance. And in their states, if I do something stupid, if I don't show support, you can fire me. There doesn't need to be at will, if I can fire you. Contract, and that's what I'm saying, or what I would think. So, I was just, and that's what most people think here. So, yeah, that's, isn't it state law that it has to be at will?
Yeah.
No, there's no state law that says, you're right, that's a very high margin. No, there's no state law that says everybody has to be at, at will. Absolutely not. It is also not necessarily true that a contract doesn't mean anything simply because it is at will, or because the contract is used, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I like to stand up so I can see everybody. The contract is used to define a lot of aspects of the employment relationship. Ending the employment relationship is kind of the central feature of an at-will employment contract. And I would say this, if you want to have something other than an at-will contract, that is a policymaking function, and it's a function of the board, not of management, typically. So, boards make the kind of decision about whether you're going to